All right, I hereby open the work session of the Springfield Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call, please?
Good evening, Chair Buck.
President.
Commissioner Driggs.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Greenwell.
Here.
Commissioner Schmunk. Commissioner Ackland.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, I'm hearing none. This is a meeting where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to address the planning commission later tonight in our regular meeting which follows this work session. I'm gonna call our agenda item, the Housing Design Initiative Code Plan Audit, presented by Haley Campbell tonight.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm gonna have Sarah load the presentation. But if you are unfamiliar with me, Haley Campbell, Senior Planner, the City of Springfield. Tonight, I'm bringing you results of our Code and Plan Concepts Report. I did come to you in May with the audit. Now we're in the report phase of the project. You'll be hearing from me, as well as Sandy Belson, our Comprehensive Planning Manager, and Cascadia Partners, our consultants who are also here on the screen. They'll be presenting a little later in the presentation. There's several recommendations and there's a lot to cover tonight, so we're gonna try to move through things a little quickly. There will be time for discussion. But in particular, I'm asking for feedback on four concepts in particular. That's 2.1 and 2.2 to increase housing options in our commercial areas. Concept 4.2 to determine if any C-FEC walkable design standards should be chosen, should voluntarily be implemented. And then 4.4, which is to potentially replace the Booth Kelly mixed-use and the mixed-use LMICC zone with the mixed-use employment zone. So those ones in particular, we'll get to them, but I need recommendations on those in particular. Let's see if it'll work. Sorry, technical difficulties always. Let's hope we're not frozen. I'll tell Sarah to change the slides. Okay, so tonight, we've got 50 minutes. We're gonna try to get through this as quickly as possible, but with feedback. Three minutes for the background and findings, which we'll go into in a second. Forty-five minutes for the discussion, the actual concepts, and then two minutes hopefully to wrap everything up in a journ and talk about next steps. Sarah, next slide, please. Okay, so for the background, we're just gonna keep on going. Sarah, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So Springfield is growing, as a lot of you know. We don't have enough housing that people can afford. And to address this, we're planning for what's needed to support that growth. In particular, in our Springfield Housing Needs Analysis, we found that too few homes are being built and that we need 470 new homes every year to meet state targets. We've also found that many households struggle to afford housing. This includes 44% of renters and 24% of homeowners, who spend more than 30% of their income on housing, which essentially means they're cost burdened. So through this project, we hope to update our development code to make it easier to build needed housing in our commercial and mixed-use districts, which we'll go into soon. Next slide, Sarah, please. So some of these key barriers to housing production that I presented to the Planning Commission in May are talked about here. That housing as a standalone use is generally not allowed in most mixed-use or commercial districts. That where mixed-use development is allowed, it is often economically infeasible to build. We'll go into that later on in the presentation some more. That most development standards would allow for higher-density housing, but adjustments are needed to the development code to allow additional height, setbacks, or lock coverage. And that the design standards and regulations for how Springfield uses its land in the mixed-use districts could be simpler and more streamlined. Just as a reminder, we haven't touched some of these code sections in many years, so they need updating. So where we're at in the project timeline, you can see on the screen, we're in September. We're hoping to finalize these Code and Plan Concepts. Again, in May, I brought you the audit. Over the summer, we've been working on the concepts. We went to the Governance Committee in July and asked for their feedback of some of these initial concepts. That's what you're seeing part of it in the presentation tonight, but not everybody was at that meeting. It was two planning commissioners and two city councilors. So we're bringing the rest of this information to the Planning Commission for their feedback, so we can make sure that we're all on the same page and move forward. We also brought the concepts to our Technical Advisory Committee in August. We conducted a series of outreach events. This includes the Springfield City Club in August. And we also did a series of table-in events, which you may have caught me at. That was the National Night Out, the Springfield Public Library Cultural Days, and the Springfield Block Party. We're very busy at those events. Our survey is live on our website. It went live on August 26th and is available until September 30th. And then we'll hope to begin the Code and Plan Amendments from October into next year, or wrapping things up. We'll begin another round of engagements, some potential workshops, and listening sessions with the public and business owners, who we did notify. Some of the business owners impacted along Main Street in the last week or two via a postcard and some emails. And then we'll bring a draft and code amendments back to the Planning Commission in December again to give them initial draft of the potential amendments. So all this to say that we'll begin the adoption process in 2026 and hope to have it wrapped up by mid-year next year. Next slide, please, Sarah. Some ideas for new housing in our commercial and mixed-use districts. We'll be asking the Planning Commission a few times to consider how the city could balance our commercial and housing needs while balancing the community's priorities. Sarah, next slide, please. So just an overview of our recommendations. There were four recommendations and a number of concepts within those recommendations. But the first one, expand opportunities for housing in our commercial districts. Two, reduce barriers to housing in our mixed-use districts. Three, recalibrate development standards to align with our housing goals. And four, streamline and simplify the code. Sarah, next slide. So why in particular are we considering the existing commercial and mixed-use districts? These areas are already planned for shops, businesses, and a mix of uses. Some of these areas have already even have housing as part of an existing mixed-use building or standalone housing development. If you've driven down Main Street, you've probably already seen a commercial building on the ground floor or housing above. It could be just a commercial building with housing behind. Those buildings are a little old, but they are what we would consider mixed use. That makes them logical places to consider adding more housing near our existing jobs and services without major changes to how Springfield uses its land. Next slides, please, Sarah. So our current regulations, I love this example on the screen because this is showing our continuum of what housing looks like in Springfield. So on the left-hand side, you can see that existing residential districts are the most flexible by allowing standalone housing on all of our sites. Makes sense, right? R1 to R3 is where we typically see our housing. On the right, existing commercial and industrial districts, they're more restrictive. Generally, we don't allow housing unless it's considered to be a mixed-use district or there's some sort of refinement plan that allows that type of use. That leaves in the middle, that sort of flexibility for our mixed-use districts. These districts include our mixed-use residential, commercial, and employment districts. We have our Glenwood mixed-use districts and our Booth Kelly mixed-use district in downtown. Sarah, next slide. So what does this look like for the housing and design project? On the screen, you can see there's kind of that middle area that we're aiming for to allow housing in strategic locations on Main Street. That is, you're gonna hear about that in Recommendation 2, where we're looking at our community commercial and neighborhood commercial districts along Main Street. We also have the opportunity to allow mixed-use development and standalone housing in our neighborhood commercial. And we have, we're seeking feedback on our mixed-use development and applying more flexibility to some of those standards in particular. Next slide, please, Sarah. And I'm gonna have Sandy Belson jump in here about our climate-friendly areas.
Thank you, Haley. As Haley mentioned earlier, I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager, and Chelsea Hartman is actually managing the climate-friendly area project, but I'm going to speak to it this evening. So this is a state-mandated requirement under the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities rules. And it, in essence, is replacing how we used to approach mixed use. We used to call those nodes or nodal development. And so the state's transportation rules no longer require that approach and instead have replaced it with these, what's called climate-friendly areas, which are very similar to what we used to have as nodal development in that they allow a variety of housing choices. And the idea is that you have high-quality transportation options to serve those areas and that potentially people could live, work, and get some of their service needs all without needing to drive somewhere in a car within those areas. So as you can see on this spectrum, under the state requirements, we do need to allow standalone housing in climate-friendly areas. To some extent, we can require ground-floor commercial, but it's a lot more open than some of our current codes allow, as we'll get into in the next slide. So we are proposing to designate the Glenwood Riverfront area as a primary climate-friendly area. It's most in line with our current policies in that we already allow high-density residential uses in the area. And we don't regulate maximum building height. But what will be different with the implementation of this as a climate-friendly area would be we're proposing to create one planned district rather than the three that are there in that riverfront area now. And that would increase flexibility in terms of where commercial and residential uses are allowed throughout that whole riverfront area. Next. The other two areas that we have proposed for designating as climate-friendly areas would be secondary CFAs, and that's downtown and Mohawk. So we would need to comply with state rules, we would need to increase the required minimum density up to 15 dwelling units per net acre and not set a maximum density. And then within, like in the downtown area in particular, what we're proposing is to require ground-floor commercial. In other words, to not allow standalone residential. But then for off-the-arterial streets, we would allow standalone residential. And then, of course, commercial would continue to be allowed throughout all of the climate-friendly areas. So this, we're presenting these ideas as a kind of a jumping-off point for the concepts that Haley will then discuss in the upcoming slides.
Okay, so now we're gonna talk about the Main Street Quarter. So we gave you a little bit of background about what we're doing with CFAs. Now on to the housing and design. So the first concept, 2.1. There's some information here about why we're focusing on the Main Street Quarter, because I know that is probably a question in some people's minds. The first is that housing is already permitted in some specific areas, like our mixed-use designated areas, which we'll go into in a little bit. There's previous plans and concepts that has established a desire for more housing in certain areas along Main. On the screen, you can see our Main Street Quarter Vision Plan was a plan that we worked on from 2012 to 2015, where we envisioned what Main Street could look like with some new permitted uses. There's more of an opportunity for development along Main Street, especially for vacant and redevelopable parcels in our commercial areas. But we also have to take into consideration how allowing housing in multiple commercial districts throughout the city could put pressure on our employment land. We'll go into that in just a second. Next slide, please, Sarah. So for Concept 2.1, there's a couple options here. But the first is that we would allow housing on Main Street on sites that meet certain criteria. This option, again, if you're looking at that continuum that we talked about earlier, is the most flexible, known as Alternative A. This would allow standalone or mixed-use housing as long as it's under one acre on arterial street. So that's Main Street and then 42nd, which you can see on the map. It's on the slide in the presentation, but it's also in your packet, too, if you wanna look at it in more detail. Commercial uses would still be allowed. Anything over an acre, commercial would be required unless we allow some flexibility there. This works because we already allow existing standalone and mixed-use housing in certain areas along Main Street. So again, our East Main Refinement Plan Mixed Use Plan area, that is between 42nd and 48th. That is a mixed-use area where we already have some standalone housing or a mix of commercial and housing. And that area in particular, it's already a mixed-use area in our refinement plan. It would also preserve our employment land by limiting new housing to certain areas and site sizes, again, like I mentioned, under one acre. And our commercial and industrial buildable lands inventory found that overall, we have a surplus of properties under one acre. So we have more than what we might need, I guess you could say, for properties under an acre when it comes to commercial land. Next slide, please, Sarah. So the second concept, Alternative B in 2.1, would allow more housing in certain mixed-use areas. So again, what does this look like? Again, I talked about how the East Main Refinement Plan between 42nd and 48th is an existing mixed-use area. That wouldn't change. We'd just apply some more standards and what that looks like, get clear on what the standards are in particular. And then again, I talked about the Main Street Quarter Vision Plan on a previous slide. So showed a conceptual mixed-use area between 14th and 23rd. Inside these areas, we would allow standalone or mixed-use housing and commercial. Outside these areas, commercial would continue to be required. So those two areas in particular. The third and last concept for 2.1 would allow more housing in certain mixed-use centers. So this is the most limiting of the alternatives. We're looking on that continuum. These mixed-use centers would expand standalone or mixed-use housing to key intersections along Main Street. The Main Street Quarter Vision Plan identified them as 21st Street, 30th Street, and 42nd Street. Again, commercial areas at these intersections could allow standalone or mixed-use housing and commercial. Areas outside these centers would still require commercial development. One thing to consider with the mixed-use areas and the mixed-use centers over just allowing standalone or mixed-use housing on arterial streets along the Main Street Quarter is if we can imagine more housing at these key areas. Some of these areas might already be developed with existing commercial development. Maybe those developers don't wanna build housing above at those areas. Or they just could think that it's not a good fit in those locations in particular. So something to consider when we're thinking about most flexible to least flexible and where do we wanna be along that continuum. Okay, so the next option for Concept 2.2, we would allow mixed-use development in the neighborhood commercial district. You might not know what neighborhood commercial is. It's a district spread out throughout our community, which it's kinda hard to see on the screen, but again, look at the packet maps. But the neighborhood commercial district is designed to provide opportunities for your day-to-day commercial needs. Think of this like your neighborhood convenience store, a coffee shop, a small business, something like that. This would look like housing above an existing commercial use or behind an existing commercial development. In this case, a mix of uses on the same site. It would not allow standalone housing development because we're not trying to take away that commercial emphasis. We're just allowing more of a mix of uses throughout our community. Next slide, please, Sarah. Okay, now on to the discussion questions, which I need some feedback on. So for Main Street, which, if any, alternative do you support for allowing housing on Main Street? And we can go back to the maps if needed. Do you think the development code should be more flexible than today with regards to housing on Main Street? And then in the neighborhood commercial district, do you support the proposed change to allow mixed-use buildings in the neighborhood commercial district? Or do you have any concerns about that change?
Just to kind of streamline this, Commissioner Thompson, can we start with you and just kinda go down the road?
Thank you. I appreciate the great presentation. I may have more questions, but one that came to mind initially was with the standalone housing definition. Obviously, so that means that only residential use can be on that property. What's the minimum density, what's the maximum density standard for a standalone one-acre property? I guess, would it be multifamily or would it be a single family?
Sorry, I muted myself for a second. We'll get into it later in the presentation. Right now, in our commercial districts, we don't have any density standards. So that's something that we, that's a recommendation we have later in the presentation to actually apply some minimum density standards because they don't currently exist in our commercial areas. So it's a little tricky to answer the question. Can I come back to it later in the presentation?
Yeah, I guess the reason I ask is, you know, I guess I'm a fan of more flexible standards, but at the same time, I don't wanna, I guess, wrongfully discriminate from potential commercial uses if they could be warranted, obviously. So I'm all for more flexibility, but then when the last example you showed where it was like, oh, this could be a corner store, this could be a mixed-use development, that sounds really appealing, too. So I'd like to maybe have a better understanding of what that means.
Commissioner Ackland?
Thank you. I did have a question. If you could clarify, please. With Option B, you said standalone housing would be allowed between 14th to 23rd Street on Main, is that correct? And that's directly on Main?
Yes.
Okay. And with Option A, where was it that standalone housing was allowed?
It would be allowed on Main Street.
All Main Street?
Between 14th and 54th. Yeah. As long as it was under one acre. That is the proposal.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I had the benefit of hearing from you earlier in the summer, so I don't have any questions. My feedback would be that, given, given our current state today of Main Street, when you, the further east you go, I think it's arguable that development needs to happen. There's a lot of vacant, lots where there's just nothing there. There's a lot of buildings that it would be good for something to happen with them because they're just not being maintained. So I am all for flexibility. I have some slight hesitation on straight-up standalone housing without the mixed use, but I'm certainly not opposed to it. I think that Main Street is a great opportunity for both, for mixed use. And I think that our downtown area is starting to reflect some of that. And so I would support as much flexibility as possible. And I'm also with Commissioner Thompson in wanting to preserve as much opportunity for mixed-use commercial. So I'm more of a fan of the mixed use than I would lean towards standalone. Although, again, I see where there are spots where it's like, maybe standalone makes sense in certain areas. So does that help?
Yes.
Commissioner Driggs?
I don't have any questions. I like Alternative A for the flexibility. But I also agree, I know we have an oversupply of under-one-acre commercial properties right now. So I brought this up at our last Planning Commission meeting a couple weeks ago when Tom was here. I like the option of maybe ground-floor having it set up so it can be flexible, so it's built to commercial code and can be used for residential or commercial and just be flexible with whatever the market is like demanding at that time.
Okay, and we'll get into that.
Hello, so much work here. 2.1, I think, I'm hearing, I'm echoing what I've heard, I think some mention of density primarily in the one-acre for standalone. Because I don't, reading the words like that, it would suggest that it's okay to build a one-acre single home. So I think there needs to be some density references of how many per acre maximum. Secondly, just a curious question, the word flexibility, as we're using it here, does that mean flexibility at application? Or does that mean flexibility that the city has a little more control over versus somebody coming in and saying, I wanna be flexible and do this?
Yeah, I think it's being clear on the fact that it's an allowed use now. So like I said, right now, a developer could come in and say, I wanna build a multifamily property or I wanna build a mix of uses on Main Street. And typically, we don't allow that unless it's already a mixed-use area, which really limits it to between 42nd and 54th in Main Street. So a couple blocks, so to speak.
So I think I'd be in support of either A or B on that. 2.2, very briefly, I think it's a no-brainer. The term neighborhood commercial implies mixed use. And why shouldn't it be?
All right, I'll only add on the term neighborhood commercial use. This is, this definitely reflects kind of, you know, maybe my personal perspective, so I'm all for, I am definitely supportive of that. But you do ask what concerns I have about that change. And I don't think it's possible, but I would love to see some, I'd love to see some management on what types of commercial mixed use can go into the neighborhood. Things like corner stores and convenience stores and those things. I think those things are great. I don't think that, I mean, I guess I have a different opinion when you start getting into vape shops and dispensaries and things like that. Not that we can discriminate against those, not that we can, you know, put that into the code. But if I'm putting out concerns, it's like, if it's commercial, then those, I mean, there's regulations specifically for those kinds of things, but they would be allowed in there, too. And I think that I have some concerns there, but not, I mean, putting that out there. And again, that's me, and I know that there's a lot of differing opinions there. And I'm not, it's not an objection, but you use the word concern, I would say that's appropriate.
And we can look into that use, too, with these code amendments, too. I'll get you some more information if you would like. Okay, any other questions before I move on?
I did just wanna, thank you for answering my earlier question. I just wanted to go back through my notes. But I did wanna say that I support either Alternative A or B and getting more housing on Main Street. And then as far as 2.2, I also support mixed-use buildings in the neighborhood commercial districts.
Great, thank you. Okay.
As do I.
Okay, we're gonna move on, Sarah, to the next slide, and I'm gonna have Cascadia Partners jump in here. And they're gonna cover Recommendation 3 and Most Recommendation 4.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Damon Kimmel. I'm a partner with Cascadia Partners, and we're the main consultant working on this project. I have Pauline Regg with me tonight, taking notes and following along. So I'm gonna cover, we're sort of shifting gears to, you know, we talked about sort of where housing should be allowed and whether mixed use should be required, right, in that bigger picture question of sort of where and what zone districts. And so we're kinda honing in a little bit now and gonna talk about what development and design standards should apply where mixed-use development or housing is allowed in those districts. And the first concept we wanna take you through is a few ideas for how we could modify the standards to make mixed-use development more feasible. And so this would apply in any instance in either the commercial or mixed-use districts where a mixed-use development is required in order to build housing. And so this is both in some of the existing mixed-use districts, could also come up in some locations in the commercial districts that we just talked about. So in all of those cases, you know, how do we make it a little easier to build that mixed-use development, which a lot of people like and would prefer to see in these districts? There's a couple challenges with these, particularly in today's markets. There's a sort of weakening demand for new commercial space. When you include a commercial component in a building, the cost of developing that project is greater than if it was standalone housing. And so what we're trying to do is, can we make the code a little bit easier to meet those standards for mixed-use development? So I'm gonna go through three different ways we have proposed to do that, if you go to the next slide. So the first one is to actually reduce the amount of the ground floor that's required to be a commercial use. So the amount of ground-floor space that must be commercial varies quite a bit across the various zone districts in the city today. And generally it's a pretty high amount of, um, space. And so if you have a relatively large mixed use building, uh, you might be talking about fifty, sixty. Plus percentage of that ground floor, which can add up to a lot of space. It's a hard space that's hard to fill, uh, potentially, uh, depending on market demand. And also it's space that, um, may be more productive, um, if it could be used for, um, residential dwellings on the ground floor. And so the idea here is to sort of right-size that a little bit, provide a little bit more flexibility to a developer. For the minimum amount of space that's required while continuing to allow them to. Uh, make the entire ground floor, uh, a commercial space if they, you know, see the market demand and want, want that type of development program. Okay, go ahead and go to the next slide. So the second concept here is. The current, uh, mixed use development standards, um, sometimes you're unclear about whether. That commercial space must be part of the same building and what we would call a vertical mixed use building. So when you typically see commercial on the ground floor, residential above. Um, but sometimes it's not clear whether or not something like what we call a horizontal mixed use development, uh, could be permitted. And so the idea here would be to clarify and to, um. Make sure it is, um, clear that the code will allow that configuration of two different buildings. Whether maybe a standalone commercial building in the front and then a residential building, uh, in the rear. And, um, this is a common, um, allowance in, in mixed use districts and other jurisdictions and just provides that flexibility where. In some cases, it may be more simple from a construction perspective to have those uses in different buildings. It may, from a site planning perspective, just make a little bit more sense. But from the city's policy perspective, you're still getting that mixed use development. It's just gonna take a little different form. So the proposal here would be to, to clarify the code to make sure horizontal mixed use, uh, is an option. And go to the next slide. And then this third one, which is actually was, was just brought up by one of the commissioners. This a little goes a little bit further than the first two, uh, wishes to say that. The code could, uh, require that the ground floor of a building, um, be built to. A building code standard and meet certain, uh, requirements that would make it what we would call commercial ready. Uh, and so the space could be, you, uh, could be used for a commercial space. Or it could be used for dwellings. So particularly like a live-work dwelling is the kind of thing that would, um, function well in this space. But the code wouldn't specify that that ground floor must be occupied or used, uh, as a commercial use. Could be used for a commercial, it could be used for a dwelling. But the advantage of this kind of standard is that by requiring the development to meet a commercial ready design standard. Then it ensures that, um, on the, in those commercial, uh, districts and mixed use districts. That that building could be converted to have a commercial use in it at some point in the future. Uh, and so this is again, a little bit more flexibility there to allow for the space to transition over time. As market demand shifts, uh, and allow it to respond to, to demand. The one disadvantage of this, uh, approach is it would, um, uh. In, in some cases may result in that res, that ground floor being occupied as a dwelling. Once it's occupied as a dwelling. It's maybe un, less likely to convert to a commercial use in the future. So it provides less certainty for, uh, the city that that site will include a commercial use. So this is an example maybe of a standard you want to apply in certain areas where you want to have flexibility. And you're not as concerned about making sure there is a commercial use on the site. So those are the three stand, three concepts for sort of regulating, uh, what is the minimum for a mixed use development? And then I think we're gonna go ahead and go to a couple of concepts on, uh, under recommendation four. If I'm correct, or do we want to stop here Haley for questions?
I think we'll stop real quick for questions, but I'm hoping we can get through them kind of quick.
Commissioners, are there any questions, um, at this juncture? No questions.
Awesome, we're gonna move on.
Going to go to the next slide. So continuing on the theme of, of development standards, so we have. Four concepts here, which I would characterize as sort of, um. We're trying to sort of recalibrate standards that in, uh, the commercial and, um. Mixed use districts, we think aren't quite aligned with the city's, uh, housing goals. And particularly making sure that you are allowing enough housing opportunities. And removing, uh, standards or mitigate, or, or excuse me, uh, revising standards that. Could, uh, inadvertently become a barrier to housing development. Uh, and so the first one is, which was mentioned before is in, is to apply a consistent minimum density standard across. The commercial and mixed use districts. So in any districts where. Housing is permitted to have a minimum density, uh, requirement. So this is a common, uh, standard in the residential districts today. Is applied in some mixed use districts today, but not in others. In the commercial, uh, districts, which generally don't allow housing. Right now there isn't a minimum density standard. So begs the question that if housing was permitted, should a minimum density apply? And we think it should, and for the reason of making sure there's an efficient use of land, um, making sure that you are. You have a, um, overall, uh, uh, limited supply of commercial. And mixed use land in the city. So you want to make sure that each of those sites is generating, um, a sufficient, you know, density of housing. So where do you calibrate that standard at is the question, and we would recommend something in the range of fifteen to twenty, uh, units per gross acre. Uh, this is, um, consistent with, with, um, what the, uh, standard. That will be proposed for some of the climate friendly areas. And, um, part of the rationale for that is that. What that density level generally allows it for is, um, middle housing types. So your townhomes, quadplexes, um, something that could be potentially ownership housing. More likely than a large, um, multi-unit dwelling or apartment building, which is, um, less likely to be, uh, condominiums or for sale housing. And so you might preserve that opportunity to have some for sale housing, but have, make sure that housing is built at a relatively high density and using that land efficiently. So kind of gets into that middle housing scale, um, but then of course it is a minimum density. So it would allow for, um, higher density, um, uh, multi-unit dwellings. The, the, this, is it just a minimum density? So right now we're not proposing that a maximum density apply. The maximum density on the sites in these commercial and mixed use districts would be. Regulated by other standards like building heights and lot coverage and setbacks. And go to the next slide. So there is a, um, currently a height step down requirement, um, in many of the commercial and mixed use districts. And this is one of the standards that we thought, uh, could potentially be a, um, barrier to housing development, particularly multi-story housing development. And then the standard structured right now so that if the building is within fifty feet, uh, from an adjacent R1 or R2 zone. Then the, um, maximum building height goes from what is typically, um, either no building, no maximum height. Uh, or maybe fifty, sixty plus feet, uh, down to thirty-five feet or fifty feet, depending on when it, what zone it's adjacent to. And that fifty-foot horizontal distance is really where the, um. The barrier comes into play. It eats into a good portion of the site and especially on some smaller sites. Uh, and we can see with this modeling here, it's showing that that can have a pretty significant impact on the number of units you can fit into the, on the site. And that achievable density. And so what we're recommending is kind of tightening up that step down. So it's, so it's only applies within twenty-five feet of an adjacent R1 or R2 zone. Sort of mitigating that impact on development feasibility, uh, while addressing the purpose of the standard, which is to make sure. That close to those lower density zones, that the height sort of transitions down, uh, to be more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. And go to the next slide. So we were talking about the, um, neighborhood commercial district, which is proposed to allow for, um, mixed use buildings. Uh, under the, these concepts. One of the key, uh, barriers to, um, mixed use development. Occurring in, in that district, uh, would be that the current maximum height standard, which is set at twenty feet. I think that was set at that, um, level, probably because most of the existing commercial uses or single story. Um, in that zone and that was what was envisioned. So as we're sort of refreshing the vision for how that zone could be, um, used and what kinds of, uh, developments could be. Included in it. I know a vertical mixed use building really. You might be able to fit two stories and twenty feet, but a two-story vertical mixed use building is unlikely to be, um, economically feasible. You just don't have enough housing density there, uh, to make that project, uh, workable. So the proposal here would be to increase that height to somewhere between forty-five to fifty feet, which would allow for a full four stories. That's a pretty common development, uh, sort of prototype, uh, usually three stories of, uh, residential over one story of commercial. A more likely to be built. Um, again, that height step down would still apply. So it would require that building to, um. Uh, reduce in height if it's close to a residential zone. But we think this would make sure that mixed use development could actually be feasible, uh, in that NC district. And go ahead and go to the next slide. And then, uh, another tweak here that we're proposing is that in the neighborhood commercial district and then also separately in the mixed use residential district. There's currently maximum lot coverage standards that are some in the range of thirty-five to forty-five percent. That simply is, uh, is requiring, um, that the site set aside a significant portion of the, of the site area. For landscaping or parking, um, which, um, we think is inconsistent with the city's policy goals to make sure there's. Higher density housing development that's allowed on these sites. And so what would be proposed is to increase that maximum lot coverage, may vary by housing type. But something in the range of fifty to seventy-five percent would be more consistent with allowing for that higher density housing that's envisioned in these districts. Okay, I think that's all for concepts. Recommendation three, which had to do with the development standards. I think we were gonna pause here for questions. Do you want to go to the next slide? I think there's a list of questions there.
Um, so I'll just read the questions real quick and, um, feel free to pipe up. So do you agree that a minimum density standard is important in these districts? I believe Commissioner Thompson had some questions about that. Height, do you agree with the proposed changes to the maximum height regulations intended to reduce barriers to higher density housing? That was in the neighborhood commercial, um, and then, you know, step, step back requirements that we talked about. And then design standards, uh, design issues are, what design issues are most important to you when you think about development in the mixed use districts? We talked about, um, reducing the frontage requirements, um, the ground floor commercial ready space. And allowing horizontal mixed use instead of just vertical mixed use.
Excellent, um. Which end do we want to start with? You want, are you ready to go? Okay, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you Chair, thank you Haley, um, and thank you, uh. For the great presentation. So, uh, number one, do you agree with minimum density standard? Do you agree that a minimum density standard is important in, in these districts? And I will reply in the effort. Affirmative there, I agree. Do you agree with the proposed changes to maximum height regulations and to reduce barriers to higher densities housing? I agree with that as well. I guess design issues are most important. I think what is most important to me, I guess, when I'm, I was kind of envisioning in my mind, uh, how we should prioritize, I guess, housing. And I guess. I, I kind of thought that occurred to me is a lot of the people who are gonna be living in these mixed use developments may not be working in the commercial spaces underneath. So I think the focus should be on. Where are they gonna be going to? You know, if we're gonna basically highlight, if we're gonna encourage more development along Main Street within existing commercial spaces that don't, that currently prohibit these uses. Do we have, uh, matching, uh, you know, transit notes? Basically, is there a lot of bus stops around? So I guess in my mind, I've kind of shifted away from the importance of emphasizing mixed use. And thinking more about, I guess, housing opportunity. And I guess accessibility to. Auxiliary uses is what are most important to me. So access to transit. Access to, you know, sustainable transportation bike. So basically think about the people are gonna be using these spaces and where they will be working. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ackland?
Thank you. Um, question first and then several comments. In regards to max lot coverage, when we're talking about increasing that to fifty, fifty to seventy-five percent. Coverage, does that, let's say that they go all the way up to seventy-five percent low coverage, is that still providing enough parking? For that area?
So generally we don't have any parking requirements anymore. That was something that was stripped under the CFEC standards. We can no longer require parking. That doesn't mean that a developer won't, um, include parking in their development. They absolutely could, and that's something, you know, that they'll have to factor in when they choose to develop. Maybe they'll reduce the height or the lot coverage standards, just so they can provide the amount of parking that they think is necessary.
Gotcha, thank you. Um, so a note that I had in, in regards to the design standards was just that I want to ensure that parking isn't a significant challenge in the mixed use districts. But I also don't want to have massive parking lots with unnecessary parking spots. So in neighborhood residential and mixed use districts, I just want walking and biking to be incredibly safe and easy. Altogether, I, I support all of the, the concepts, uh, minimum density, the height. Uh, for concept three point one, I, I, um. Wanted to say, I, I'm in the most support for the third recommendation. I feel like we already have. So many vacant commercial spaces here in Springfield. We, you know. I, I don't feel like it's our top priority to be making even more commercial spaces. Um, but I do support all of those recommendations and concepts. Thank you.
So, um, yeah, I, I absolutely support a minimum, uh, density. I think that for the reasons you guys stated. If you're going to allow housing on a one acre parcel. We have to be efficient with that. There's only so much land. And we're gonna have to add lots of housing every single year. It's not a one-time thing. So I don't, I don't feel like there's much of a choice there. I think minimum density has to be considered. With regards to height, um, yeah, I, I certainly, um. The proposal makes a lot of sense. Uh, the, the one thing that. I don't necessarily know that I, I completely grasp is. I understand the limitations that, um, the step down piece creates, uh, when you, when you're building. But I'm not sure really. What the purpose of having them in the first place was. I don't know, like what does the step, what, what was the purpose of that? Because to me. It's an unnecessary regulation, but I'm probably missing something. So. I'll just put that out there is. It does, that doesn't make sense to me. Um, and then the design standards. I think that for me, um, I definitely feel that there's. I, I, I certainly agree with Commissioner Ackland that we've got a, a lot of, um, commercial space that's not being used. Effectively right now. I think that we still need commercial space and. I certainly value protecting that. I just think we need to use it in a different way. And so some of the things that are important to me. We have a lot of buildings on, along Main Street that quite frankly. Aren't being maintained. And, um, we've seen vacant buildings, uh, go up. In smoke because of that. And, and there's probably a dozen or more buildings just like that along Main Street. So I value properties that are very functional, that are very safe and that are being maintained. Because right now. And one of our, our busiest thoroughfares, we have a lot of buildings that I don't think anybody's done anything with in decades. And so to me. Um, the functional, functional use of the housing and the commercial is important. But also being able to, to have some requirements around what that looks like and how it needs to be maintained. Cause clearly that's a, an area we need to focus on a little bit. And then, uh. I certainly do appreciate Commissioner Thompson's comment about transportation. I think that's one of the things I like about using Main Street is because there is a lot of bus access right now. It is feasible for, for bike and pedestrian. And so I feel like. That's a great, great place to add more density, more dense housing opportunities because there already. Are a lot of strategic advantages. Of course, parking is also a concern. We can't address that because of, of, um, regulations. But I certainly think it's a value. So I think overall really great job and I'm definitely very supportive of everything you put in here.
I'll just keep mine brief. Um, I'll just keep mine brief. Definitely agree with the minimum density and the uh proposals to the changes in height allowances. Um, and I like all of the concepts that were put forward.
All right. Um, tell me if I'm mishearing the standalone housing phrase. On my mind, I keep hearing that as single-family dwellings. Is that correct or not?
No, multifamily.
Okay. Then the comment I had about density goes away. Um, the second, second topic, um, the height of buildings, I am still gonna maintain a little sensitivity to putting four stories next to an R one or R two. Um, only because I know that will potentially devalue the R one or R two that's the next to a four-story building, which uh is kind of hard to control. Um, and the only comment on design standards is that design, everybody's got an idea of what's good design and what's bad design. It's rarely the same. And if there's going to be design standards in the code, I just think they really need to be bulletproof. Or or fewer rather than more. Just because it is so hard to interpret that on the fly. That's it.
Flexibility, that's what this project is all about. Okay, any other questions before we move on? Awesome. Sarah, next slide. Um, Cascadia, I'm gonna leave it up to you um with these next concepts, what you want to cover as far as discussion questions, or if you just kind of want to slide through them. Some of these things are um, we've kind of already talked about previously, and we do need to get to concept four point four, which is the meat and potatoes. So go ahead, take it away.
Sure. Yeah, I can do a very uh brief summary of these. Um, so um mainly the um uh idea here with concept four point one is that the current uh mixed-use districts include some design standards that just have a variety of various issues with them. Um, but related to state law, related to uh redundancy with other standards that apply citywide. Uh, and so the proposal here is mainly not to totally reinvent what the outcome we're trying to achieve with those design standards, but ju- just to make them a little bit more clear. Uh, simple, uh, easier to administer. Uh, and so some of them are are really valid and and address important uh issues related to to developments, I think, keeping those. Um, but generally, our approach will be to simplify and streamline those as much as possible. And go to the the next slide now. I think this is maybe one where we want to get a little more input on. Uh, and so when we're looking outside of the mixed-use districts uh in some of those commercial districts we mentioned, so since those are going to be potentially amended with this project, there's an opportunity to move toward compliance with uh an upcoming uh requirement uh from the state. And so uh as part of the climate-friendly and equitable communities program, there are new set of rules around the types of land use regulations and um, that extends to design standards that um cities must implement in order to promote um more climate-friendly uh pedestrian-friendly development patterns. Uh, the current mixed-use districts largely have a lot of those standards in place. Um, but then there aren't many of those kinds of standards in the commercial districts. And so there are a couple of changes that are really clearly needed to ensure compliance with those C F E C rules. And those are the two here that are listed under on that bullet there. Prohibiting that parking lots be located between the building and the street is purely explicitly required by the rules. It doesn't have a lot of flexibility in uh not doing that. Uh, and then to make sure that that main entry for the building is oriented to the street and not to the parking lot in the behind or the side of the of the lot. Again, just trying to make sure that that building is accessible and easy to access for pedestrians. There are things the city could do to go further, and it's kind of en- envisioned in this image here. Those are things like having a maximum building setback. So uh requiring that building to come up a little bit closer to the street uh and be more pedestrian-friendly and accessible. And then standards that would apply to actually the um facade of the ground floor to make it more uh interesting, uh engaging, pedestrian-friendly. And those are things like uh having a minimal amount of window area and then having weather protection. So things like you see there and awning over the door uh for pedestrians. Those aren't strictly required by the rules, but those are some good ideas if the priority is in these commercial districts to uh support, as you were uh alluding to, a um uh new development contributing to a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly, transit-friendly uh type of development pattern. And so we're looking for some initial feedback on those kinds of standards in the NC and CC districts. Would you support going further than what the state rules require to sort of prioritize pedestrian-oriented design? And then I think we could just wrap up with the next one very quickly. It's a very uh simple concept. Uh, the mixed-use districts have a very uh sort of outdated um but archaic uh way of defining uses. And so part of this project too would to would be convert those into simpler use categories. Uh, so we're no longer going to list things like psychologists and counselors and detective agencies and the mixed-use district. Uh, those will be part of a broader cali- category called offices and clinics, for example. This is largely just a cleanup and sort of um modernization of that code. Um, won't really affect what use uses are permitted outside of the changes to housing that we've talked about. Um, but really just make the code a little more concise and easy to use. Okay, so we can maybe pause there if we want to get impact or input on the um C F E C design standards. Or Haley, leave it to you if you want to get through the um the last concept.
Thank you, Jamon. So I'm just gonna um really quick, go back to that C F E C uh walkable design standard. So there were two options, I think he's here. Um, where we have some flexibility and that was um the maximum building setback. We're not required to do that by state law, but it's something that we can consider when it comes to pedestrian access and walkability. And then that minimum window area and weather protection standards. It'd just be helpful for me if I can have a yes or no, if you're in favor for of it.
Commissioner Thompson?
So if I reply yes, that means I am in favor of adopting those extra standards.
Yes, and that we would move forward with um putting those concepts into the amendment package.
I support that. Thank you.
Commissioner Ackland?
I support that as well.
Uh, I support them both.
I support both as well.
Yes and yes, but I have a question. Feeling stupid. C F E C?
Uh, C F X, C uh climate-friendly and equitable communities. All right, Sarah, let's jump ahead. All right, last concept of the night. This is a big one. Um, so for concept four point four, this would replace the Booth Kelly Mixed Use District and the Mixed Use Light Medium and Medium Industrial Community Commercial District. Wow, a mouthful. Um, with the Mixed Use Employment District. So that's going from three different districts down to potentially one district. So the Mixed Use L M I C C district was established by our Gateway Refinement Plan, um, but it's not defined in the Development Code. Literally doesn't exist if you're looking through our Development Code. Um, industrial and commercial uses are permitted, but there are limits on the commercial uses and residential is prohibited in that area. Then for the Booth Kelly Mixed Use Area, this is act also proposed to be a uh C F E C walkable neighborhood secondary C F E C area. Um, or I'm sorry, C F A area, climate-friendly area. Um, so that is in the in the downtown's uh overlay potentially. Um, so this was established by Downtown Refinement Plan and allows industrial and commercial uses with no limitation. Residential uses are allowed, but they're limited, limited to thirty-five percent of the district. Um, so the overall Booth Kelly Mixed Use District. Sarah, next slide, please. Um, then the Mixed Use Employment. Uh, it's not mapped. Again, doesn't exist in our zoning code, so you can kind of see the overlap of what's going on here. Um, it allows industrial, commercial, and residential. However, there are some types of commercial uses that are prohibited, and industrial uses must make up no less than sixty percent of the floor area. So this is in our code, but is no properties are zoned mixed-use employment in our city. Um, so there's maybe an opportunity here to streamline uh and simplify the code with these land use districts. Um, we could rezone properties currently zoned Booth Kelly Mixed Use and the Mixed Use L M I C C, which I showed on the previous slide. Um, this would allow for the Booth Kelly Mixed Use District to be removed from the code, and then we'd simplify the number of land use plan districts. Again, I said we go from three down to one. Um, it would resolve the issues with enforceability and legal status, because the Mixed Use L M I C C zone um, again, does not exist in our development code. And so when you're trying to enforce those regulations, you have to go to our refinement plan to look and see what those regulations are. Um, it'd make the standards easier to access and understand, and it would allow housing opportunities right now in our Mixed Use L M I C C zone where it is currently not allowed. Sarah, next slide. Okay, so, but we're gonna go into the key implu- implications and then ways that we could kind of resolve those implications. Uh, so right now, residential would be a newly permitted use in the Mixed Use L M I C C zone. Um, and it would continue to be permitted in the Booth Kelly Mixed Use. You're allowing housing where you currently don't allow housing. Commercial uses could be more restrictive in both districts. Retail, certain office uses and hotels are prohibited um in certain instances. And then industrial uses would continue to be permitted. Um, but there'd be new maximum height limit of sixty feet where currently there is no maximum height restriction. So to resolve some of these uh potential impacts, it's recommended that we modify the Mixed Use Employment standards in the Development Code. Again, we have no property zone mixed-use employment, so it has kind of minimal impact on what this could look like. Um, but it is recommended by Cascadia that we reconsider the requirement for industrial uses to be the primary use, again, sixty percent of the district. So that could mean, you know, it doesn't have to be sixty, it could be forty, it could be fifty. We have the flexibility to decide um what that split could be. If it's primarily industrial, it could now be primarily commercial and less industrial or vice versa. Um, if it's not removed, we don't apply those standards to the Booth Kelly Mixed Use District, because we don't have those, some of those standards right now in the Booth Kelly Mixed Use District. The intent of this is not to create additional standards. The intent is to apply flexibility where we can while simplifying where we can. Again, we'll allow the full range of retail, office, and institutional uses, so as not to prohibit any uses that are currently allowed today, which I know would probably be a concern if we were gonna um redevelop the Booth Kelly Mixed Use. We don't want to prohibit any uses where we currently could allow them. We would ensure that allowing for residential as part of a mixed-use development is appropriate in the Mixed Use L M I N T C zone. That area is already developed with a lot of commercial and industrial uses, so we would decide if we want to allow residential in that area now or not. Um, because it's a mixed-use employment area. Again, some people we might consider um like a live-work situation, if they want to live above a commercial or industrial use and walk to work. What does that look like? How do we maintain compatibility with those types of uses? Um, and then ensure that the height limit and design standards are appropriate or modify them as needed. Next slide, Sarah. All right, so the question. Um, do you anticipate any major concerns or issues with replacing or consolidating these districts with the Mixed Use Employment District? Why or why not?
Commissioner Thompson?
I have no major concerns. Thank you.
I can't say that I anticipate any major concerns. I do support rezoning both to M U E uh along with the four strategies that are recommended.
Um, I definitely support um what you presented here. Um, I think that if there's going to be concerns or issues, it's going to be around the fact that we're making some significant changes that's going to that's gonna cause some pushback every time we change something. You know, ch- change is one of those things that always kind of stirs stuff up. So I think that as we kind of change things and change the rules and what's allowed, and people start seeing some of that implemented, I think that it'll cause some questions and concerns, but I don't think that it's anything that we would not expect otherwise and can manage.
Um, I don't have any concerns and I uh agree with the proposals.
What is that zone called that people can do certain development and get tax exemptions? Economic something zone?
Housing diversity tax exemption?
We're not undoing anything that the city's agreed to with the previous zoning?
I think you're talking about opportunity zones, and those are designated under federal law. There's also um the um this wouldn't relate in any way to the tax exemption zones that the city has designated. Those don't interact with our land use.
No agreement the city made to to zone these things the way they are initially that could be undermined or
Not under, well, our enterprise zone doesn't have any, yeah, the enterprise zone doesn't have any relation to our, I mean, I, it, the, the designations themselves factor into where we draw that boundary, but once the boundary is adopted, rezoning the property inside that zone doesn't change the applicability of the enterprise.
That's my only concern.
Thanks. I couldn't think of the word enterprise zone for a long time. I kept thinking of
Either.
Economic opportunity zone had me stuck in federal opportunity zones, which are different. Thanks.
I'm good with it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. I know we covered a lot tonight. Um, I'm always available for questions or concerns. Feel free to reach out to me, email me, give me a phone call.
Job, Haley.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we are um it's at seven oh five. Are everybody ready to to go into our regular session or do we need a quick break? Good, good, good. Okay. Then um with that, I hereby adjourn the work session. And I hereby open the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. Um, there are no changes to the agenda, so I don't believe we need a roll call. Um, any adjustments to the agenda? And if you guys would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Vigilance, which stands foundation under God, visible.
All right. Thank you. Um, business from the audience. We will now take business from the audience. This is the time uh in our agenda where the public can provide testimony on any topic relevant to the Planning Commission, not otherwise on our agenda. If anyone is online or in the audience um that would like to speak. All right.
Does anyone in the audience or online like to um speak about something that's not on the agenda later and not in the public, as as the public hearing? And if you do, please raise your hand if you're online.
So this is, this is the time for anything that's not on our agenda. So Sarah, I'm I'm not seeing any raised hands. Is there anybody online?
There are two people online. There was, yeah, I've quickly, there is a raised hand. And I'm gonna allow him to talk.
Okay, well, let me let me read the rest of my
Yeah.
Spiel. Spiel here. Um, if you'd like to uh speak, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom or press star nine by joining by phone. If you're here in person, fill out the request to speak card and present it to Sarah, our planning commission assistant. Uh, when called upon to speak, please state your name, your mailing address, and keep your comments to three minutes. Um, and we have a raised hand online?
We have Mr. Jones online that has raised his hands. Do you have something to say, Mr. Jones?
Expected there to be a council consideration of the Glenwood area tonight, the sixteenth at seven o'clock. And I guess I tried to find it and I got you instead of what I thought I was looking for.
Well, Mr. Jones, um, thank you for that. Uh, you you did find the right meeting. It's just, it's not council, it's uh Planning Commission. Uh, our role is to provide recommendations to city councils. So you are in the right place, uh, and that is our agenda item tonight. So um I think you're, uh, I I think you 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 got the right thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, since that is part of our regular agenda and there'll be an opportunity later, um, we'll go ahead and move on. I would like to, well, Sarah, I wanted to confirm that's that was all that we had. Okay.
Yes.
So uh I'm gonna call our agenda item, the Glenwood Rubber Footprint Apartments. Um, Christina, can you please give us uh an explanation of a legislative hearing process?
Yes, I'll be really brief. Um, a legislative hearing process is one in which the um Planning Commission is not acting in a quasi-judicial capacity, but you're acting um in the interest of the city as a whole, uh, essentially. And so um these application, these um amendments to adopted plans and regulations, while they affect um a finite number of properties, they're not bound to result in a particular decision, and the criteria of approval are merely a minimum requirement that must be met. You can use discretion in how you apply those requirements and whether you wish to for a recommendation of approval or not on these. And the city councils ultimately also um can use a significant policy discretion um in weighing those amendments. And so um the normal rules around ex parte context don't apply to And so the normal rules around ex parte context don't apply to this proceeding. And you do need to declare conflicts of interest, but there's no special process that we follow for this hearing. So it is one of the more simpler forms. Anyone who wants to testify can do so. While it's not mandatory to raise issues regarding the statewide planning goals or other criteria of approval, it's very helpful to do that. I do recommend if you have outside information that's relevant that you believe is not reflected in the record, that you do share that. That's not a legal minimum requirement, but it's very helpful, I think, to your fellow commissioners. If you have information or expertise that's not reflected in the packet, to share that sometime during the hearing. If you have any questions for me, happy to answer them. Otherwise, it's appropriate to declare any potential conflicts of interest and then conduct your hearing and hear from staff first.
Any questions from Commissioners? Alrighty. Let's kind of go down the line and declare any bias or conflicts of interest, starting with Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. I have no biases or conflicts of interest. Thank you.
None, thank you.
No bias or potential, or conflicts of interest, only potential conflicts of interest is I am a homeowner in Springfield and I do work in the city.
No biases or potential conflicts of interest.
No biases or potential conflicts of interest that I'm aware of.
Alright, thank you. At this time, we would like to go ahead and hear from Tom.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Tom Seaver, Senior Planner in the Current Planning Section. I am before you tonight to seek a recommendation to City Council on the proposed zoning map amendment, Development Code text amendment, and Glenwood Refinement Plan GRP text and diagram amendments in the Glenwood Riverfront Mixed-Use Plan District. The subject site at the center of tonight's hearing is located in West Springfield. More specifically, the master plan area depicted here in yellow currently consists of thirty-eight lots on a little more than twenty-two acres. This area received annexation approval earlier this year and has further reached a milestone by submitting the subject applications for review. The Planning Department received three applications from the Springfield Economic Development Agency, who in concert with existing property owners Roth &amp; Roth LLC and Homes for Good, Lane County's Housing Agency, are proposing amendments to aid in the redevelopment of the Glenwood Riverfront. A forthcoming master plan and subdivision application will ultimately reconfigure this area. The applications work together to implement the Glenwood Riverfront Master Plan Vision by reconfiguring residential and commercial mixed-use zoning, modernizing development code standards, and updating the refinement plan map and text to align with the zone and code amendments. Current zoning depicted here shows an east-west configuration within the master plan area with limited commercial acreage. Commercial being the reddish color. The residential mixed-use RMU zone is housing-focused, requiring high-density residential development with small-scale commercial uses allowed only a secondary ground-floor uses. Comparatively, the commercial mixed-use CMU zone is commerce-focused, prioritizing employment, retail, office, hospitality, and entertainment while allowing high-density residential development. The zoning map amendment requests the adjustment of the zoning boundary between Glenwood Residential Mixed-Use GRMU and Glenwood Commercial Mixed-Use GCMU zones in a stacked north-south configuration and an increase in commercial acreage. Overlays such as the nodal development area and the multimodal mixed-use area remain in place, supporting walkability, transit use, and compact urban form. There are five approval criteria for zoning map amendments. Criteria one: consistency with applicable Springfield Comprehensive Plan policies and the Springfield Comprehensive Plan map. There are policies of the Comprehensive Plan, the Residential Land Use and Housing Element, Economic Element, and the Urbanization Element that apply to the subject site. Residential Land Use and Housing Element Policy H2 requires, one, at least twenty-eight gross buildable acres in Glenwood be designated Glenwood Residential Mixed-Use GRMU by December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. And two, capacity for a minimum of four hundred and eleven high-density units with net minimum density greater than or equal to twenty-eight dwelling units per acre. Establishment of higher minimum and maximum densities is encouraged to support the neighborhood commercial uses and employment uses envisioned in the GRP. The GRP designated thirty-three and a quarter acres as RMU. The master plan area includes only part of that, about seventeen and a half acres today, reduced to ten point six acres under the proposal. Using the GRP's gross-to-net conversion factor, that equals about eleven point eight net acres now and seven point two net acres after the amendment. Even so, the site still supports three hundred and fifty-nine units at fifty dwelling units per net acre. And across Glenwood, the RMU total remains well above the four hundred and eleven unit minimum set by Comprehensive Plan Policy H2. The request therefore meets and exceeds the required housing capacity while creating larger, more viable mixed-use blocks. Economic Element Policy E9 encourages redevelopment of Glenwood as a mixed-use housing, employment, and commercial center. Per the Sybil analysis and the applicant's interpretation, the requested ZMA increases commercially-oriented mixed-use blocks in the two-to-three acre range versus many that are less than two acres currently. This addresses the Sybil finding that the region has a surplus of small sites and a relative scarcity of larger sites. The larger block pattern is also consistent with GRP Policy D point four point B, which seeks to maintain or increase parcel size sizes in commercial mixed-use areas to preserve Springfield's commercial and industrial land supply. Thus, the requested ZMA aligns with both the Sybil and the GRP's intent to ensure a competitive supply of employment and mixed-use sites that aid in the, that aid in and encourage the redevelopment of Glenwood. Urbanization Element Goal One promotes compact, orderly, and efficient urban development by guiding future growth to vacant sites and redevelopment areas within the established areas of the city and to urbanize lands where future annexation and development may occur. There are no specific policies listed in this element that directly apply to the subject ZMA area. However, part of the mission of Goal One seeks to prioritize and incentivize redevelopment in Glenwood and downtown urban renewal districts as described in the economic and residential elements of the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed amendments and future master plan do exactly that. Urbanization Element Goal Three supports the provision of an adequate level of urban services, including but not limited to public water, wastewater, and stormwater management systems, environmental services, and an urban multimodal transportation system as urban development occurs within the Springfield UGB. The applicant's proposal remains consistent with these goals via recent actions such as annexation approval of the subject lots and assertion through that approval showing urban services are available or can be extended with future master plan development. Said master plan also remains sensitive to the needs of the Transportation System Plan, the TSP. Therefore, the ZMA request matches the urbanization element by underscoring steps previously or currently underway in the urbanization elements, or efforts of the site. The subject ZMA request is found to be consistent with provisions of the adopted Comprehensive Plan, Residential Land Use and Housing Element, Economic Element, and Urbanization Element as directed by Criteria One. Criteria Two: consistency with applicable refinement plans, planned district maps, conceptual development plans, and functional plans. The property is within the adopted GRP, so the following sub-elements are applicable to the proposed ZMA action. However, the TSP and the Public Facilities and Services Plan, PFSP, are based on plan designation, not zoning, so no changes are needed to the functional plans. So, Chapter Three, Land Use in Built Form, Land Use Designations, Zoning, and Sub-Areas. This policy was implemented with the adoption of the GRP. Amending zoning district boundaries does not affect this policy. The subject ZMA does not change the mixed-use, nodal development, or MMA designations as found in the GRP. Glenwood Riverfront Mixed-Use Plan District, Urban Form. This policy was implemented with the adoption and incorporation of the GRMU Plan District into the Springfield Development Code. The proposed ZMA does not affect this policy. The GRMU Plan District will remain in place and remain applicable to all parcels in the master plan area. Chapter Five, Open Space. The proposed ZMA area includes three elements of the GRP as it relates to open space, these being neighborhood urban park blocks, riverfront linear park, and riverfront multi-use path. Policies associated with these elements focus on location, design, partnerships, and environmental compliance. The ZMA request does not alter or preclude these requirements, which will be implemented through the master plan application. The master plan will determine specific alignments, widths, and connections consistent with GRP objectives. Chapter Six, Housing and Economic Development, New Housing Development. Per staff analysis, the proposed ZMA does not diminish the capacity to implement GRP housing policies. The GRP, the GRP also includes Policy D point one point E, which calls for evaluating and developing parking standards within the GRMU Plan District that support multimodal transportation choice, efficient use of land, and sufficient parking to meet demand. These parking policy objectives remain applicable and will be addressed during the master plan review. Economic Development, Commercial and Industrial Buildable Land Supply. The GRP's Economic Development Guidance aims to preserve larger, development-ready sites while keeping a walkable block structure. The ZMA supports the GRP's intent and Sybil findings to preserve economically viable site sizes while maintaining a walkable grid. This ensures that redevelopment opportunities in Glenwood are consistent with both market needs identified in the Sybil and the GRP's long-term land use framework. The ZMA proposal is consistent with the provisions of the GRP and the city's adopted functional plans as directed by Criteria Two. Criteria Three, the property is presently provided with adequate public facilities, services, and transportation networks to support the use or these facilities, services, and transportation networks are planned to be provided concurrently with, with the development of the property. The surrounding neighborhood is developed with public streets and public utilities that are available to serve future modifications within the master plan area. This has been affirmed through the annexation approval earlier this year, finding that key urban services either have adequate existing capacity or can be extended concurrently with development. Based on staff's findings and the existing transportation and utility network serving the area, the proposed zoning amendment meets the above criteria for adequate public facilities. Criteria Four, meet the approval criteria specified in SDC five point one four point one hundred when involving a Springfield Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. The applicant has submitted a refinement plan map and text amendment to align with the ZMA. Per Ordinance six four six three, adopted November two thousand and twenty-three, the streamlined process of amending the refinement plan automatically translates to the Springfield Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, the request does not require separate Comprehensive Plan amendments. And Criteria Five, compliance with Oregon Administrative Rule OAR six six zero dash zero one two dash zero zero six zero where applicable. The request remains in compliance with this OAR as the multimodal mixed-use area designations memorialized through the adoption of the Glenwood Refinement Plan in two thousand and twelve will not be changed through the current request. The Development Code amendments now are shown here with the code as it exists on the left side of the slide and the proposed amendments marked in red on the right side of the slide. The Development Code text amendments include a set of targeted amendments that apply only to the Glenwood Riverfront Mixed-Use Plan District and are limited to street grid provisions, park blocks, and permitted uses. This includes updating permitted uses to include food trucks as eating and drinking establishments, indoor recreational facilities as retail sales and service uses, and residential mixed-use formats, and permitting other uses as seen here with red P's to be allowed within the residential and commercial mixed-use zone districts of the Glenwood Riverfront area. Further provisions of the GRMU and GCMU code are shown here with changes intended to provide flexibility to both mixed-use zone districts. Some of this mirrors the use updates as seen on the previous slide, while other amendments here work to modernize allowances based on current market forces. Since both mixed-use zones seemingly operate in cooperative forms, that being mixed-use residential and commercial mixed-use, these changes are necessary to better support high-density housing, employment, and commercial development. As part of this proposal, the applicant requests removal of the exception language seen here in SDC three point four point two thirty. This exception currently modifies the application of certain mixed-use district standards in the Glenwood Riverfront Mixed-Use Plan area. Its removal will result in uniform application of standards for all properties in the GRMU and GCMU districts, thereby enhancing clarity and predictability in development review. The change, the change does not alter the base zoning, reduce allowed density, or diminish residential, commercial, or employment capacities. Instead, it strengthens alignment with the GRP and Comprehensive Plan by ensuring that all mixed-use properties are subject to consistent development requirements. So Development Code Criteria, or Development Code Amendment Criteria of Approval. In reaching a decision on the amendment of refinement plans and code text, conformance with the following must be demonstrated. Criteria A one, conformance to the Metro Plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan. The Development Code text amendments are found to be in conformance with the following policies. Residential Land Use and Housing Element Policy H2. The proposed amendments maintain compliance with Policy H2 by preserving the sufficient RMU acreage and density capacity within the GRP to meet and exceed the policy's minimum net acreage and dwelling unit requirements. The amendments do not remove residential use permissions from the GRMU designation and actually add residential capacity and uses to the GCMU designation and continues to support the policy's objective of providing high-density housing opportunities in Glenwood. Residential Land Use and Housing Element Policy H3. The proposed amendments conform to Policy H3 by retaining the land use, density, and transportation framework necessary to support higher-density residential development in a designated mixed-use nodal center within a high-priority redevelopment area, thereby furthering the city's livability, redevelopment, and infrastructure investment objectives for the Glenwood Riverfront and Franklin Corridor. Economic Element Policy E4. The proposal conforms to Policy E4 by preserving the mixed-use zoning structure, retaining the refinement plan's intended land use mix, and maintaining the economic and residential development capacity necessary to achieve long-term redevelopment goals for the Glenwood Riverfront. Economic Element E9. The proposed amendments conform to Policy E9 by implementing targeted redevelopment strategies in a designated mixed-use center, leveraging public planning and investment tools, and advancing the economic development and land use objectives for the Glenwood Riverfront area. Lastly, Economic Element E22. The proposed elements conform to Policy E22 by preserving the zoning framework for an identified mixed-use center, maintaining its intended residential and employment capacity, and supporting its role in advancing Springfield's long-term economic development and land use objectives. Criteria A2, conformance to applicable state statutes. The proposed amendments to SDC three point four point two four five and three point four point two five zero conform to ORS one nine seven point zero one two because they maintain the Glenwood Riverfront's mixed-use zoning framework and its alignment with the GRP strategy for compact, higher-density urban development. Since the changes refine permitted uses without reducing density potential or altering infrastructure and transportation policies, they uphold the statute's objectives of focusing public investment in ways that reinforce compact urban form and efficient land use. The proposed amendments to SDC three point four point two four five and three point four point two five zero conform to, further to ORS one nine seven point two hundred because they leave intact all the GRP elements that meet the statute's requirements. The GRP already establishes efficient residential density. The GRP already establishes efficient residential density ranges, site coverage requirements for non-residential uses, and implementing land use regulations, all of which remain unchanged by this proposal. The proposed amendment to SDC three point four point two-thirty, striking the exception, conforms to the objectives of both statutes because it preserves compact urban development and the refinement plan's density, coverage, and implementation measures. Criteria A3: Conformance to applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. Of the nineteen planning goals, some do not apply, some are directly related, and some are indirectly related as procedural items. Goals nine, ten, eleven, and twelve are directly related to the request. Goal Nine, Economic Development. The applicant's proposal conforms to statewide planning goal nine because it preserves Springfield's identified supply of commercial and industrial land, does not reduce buildable land inventory, and may enhance economic development potential in Glenwood Riverfront through increased flexibility in permitted uses. It is consistent with the CIBIL and EOA, the Economic Opportunities Analysis, findings, thereby maintaining compliance with Goal Nine's requirements. Goal Ten, Housing. The proposal conforms to Goal Ten because it preserves Springfield's residential land supply and density requirements as established in the Residential Land Housing Needs Analysis, the RLHNA, while supporting the continued integration of housing into the Glenwood Riverfront mixed-use environment. It does not undermine the city's ability to meet long-term housing needs. Goal Eleven, Public Facilities and Services. The proposal conforms to Goal Eleven because it maintains existing infrastructure planning, service capacity, and provision for the Glenwood Riverfront master plan area as established in both long-range citywide plans and targeted area-specific analyses. The proposed code amendments neither reduce service availability nor necessitate new facility planning, ensuring consistency with the statute's intent to align land use and public facility provisions. And lastly, Goal Twelve, Transportation. Under OAR six-six-zero-dash-zero-one-two-dash-zero-zero-six-zero-ten-A, an amendment need not apply performance standards related to motor vehicle traffic under Section 1C if the change is a map or text amendment affecting only land entirely within a multimodal mixed-use area or MMA. And the change is consistent with the definition and function of an MMA as described in the findings designating the MMA. The area subject to these amendments is entirely within the Glenwood MMA designated under Ordinance six-three-one-six, adopted in two thousand and fourteen. The proposed plan amendment and zone change does not alter any of the conclusions in the findings to Ordinance six-three-one-six at Exhibit A, page twenty-two to twenty-nine. This is Exhibit E of your packet. Therefore, this amendment is consistent with the TPR via OAR six-six-zero-dash-zero-one-two-dash-zero-zero-six-zero-ten-A. Finally, Criteria B: Applications specified in SDC five point six point one-zero may require co-adoption by the Lane County Board of Commissioners. County development on lands not served by municipal sewer remains limited by the Lane County sanitarian's inability to approve septic systems for densities above a duplex. Consequently, high-density residential changes and other amendments expanding or refining uses do not have direct regulatory effect on county governed lands due to this limitation. Therefore, the proposed Development Code amendments do not necessitate a need for co-adoption by the Lane County Board of Commissioners because they do not and cannot apply to lands outside the city limits. Finally, refinement plan amendments are necessary to align the GRP with zoning map and Development Code amendments. As seen here, the existing GRP designations reflect the existing zoning map configuration seen prior. The refinement plan amendments make two key changes. A map amendment, as seen here, works to realign the boundaries of residential mixed-use RMU and commercial mixed-use CMU designations, along with an increase in CMU acreage to match the zoning map amendment request. And a text amendment mirrors the proposed code amendment language affecting the GRP that removes the existing fifty percent cap on standalone high-density residential HDR development in the GCMU zone. Under the amendment, HDR is proposed to occupy up to one hundred percent of a development area, while commercial and employment uses remain permitted. Refinement Plan Amendment Criteria, and I have shortened this one for us tonight. The criteria for the refinement plan amendment are the same as those for the Development Code amendment. Both require consistency with the Metro Plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan, applicable state statutes, and statewide planning goals and administrative rules. Because of this overlap, I will not repeat the detailed findings here. The key distinction in the refinement plan amendment is the adjustment of designation boundaries, inclusion of additional CMU acreage, and the removal of the fifty percent residential cap in SubArea B, which works to maintain flexibility while keeping Glenwood consistent with our Comprehensive Plan. The findings confirm that the proposed amendments to the GRP continues to exceed housing requirements and maintains its role as a mixed-use center. In summary, staff's analysis, along with the applicant's narrative findings, support all proposed amendments as reflected in the reports. Staff requests Planning Commission to make a final order recommendation to the City Council regarding the subject applications and the merits put forth in support of the amendment requests. Thank you for your time here tonight, and I am available for questions as they arise.
Do any planning commissioners have any questions at the moment? Okay, Commissioner Robson?
Thank you for the great presentation. Just to confirm, maybe outside, I guess, of the bounds of this proposal, to confirm this is in the, this will be in the Glenwood Riverfront Primary CFA, is that correct, the climate-friendly?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So, will the standards that are, when the standards are implemented, that they will be carried forward into this, or is this basically, will this be a preface to the eventual standards that are part of the CFA, or has the CFA standard already been implemented for this?
I think they will be carried forward. I will look over to Christina for clarification on that. I'm not sure how that will work.
They won't be carried forward unless they're included in the, I mean, they carry forward in that they are part of the code that will be amended by the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities implementation, but they're not automatically not going to be overwritten, if that makes sense. So, I do know that Chelsea, who is the planner working on that, is aware of these amendments and intends to use them as one resource for drafting those amendments to the Glenwood area for Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, but it was important to the CETA project that there be amendments put in place that the preliminary master plan could proceed under before the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities code changes are implemented. So, the way that land use law works in Oregon is that when a permit such as a master plan application is filed, it proceeds under the standards in effect on the date of submittal if the application is a complete application. And so, the master plan will be able to proceed under any amendments adopted under this application, even if the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rulemaking picks up during that adoption process. So, I hope that answers that question.
It does. I was just curious whether the standards will be migrated over. Okay, so this is kind of an effort to make those changes prior to the standards?
Correct, for a more limited area that has a specific economic development purpose, but I believe they're in, I would say they're in harmony with the idea of Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules, and there's nothing in these amendments that I would anticipate, or I think planning staff would anticipate, would be conflicting with future CFEK standards. Do you have anything to add, Sandy?
I would say that, I'm not, I wouldn't say it's necessarily a conflict, but one area where it may be different is in the block size. So, the Climate Friendly Areas requires generally a fairly small block size, and these amendments are expanding the block sizes allowed from what's in the current refinement plan, but the Climate Friendly Areas rules for those do allow for an exception to the block size. So, I'd say that is the one area where they're probably not fully in conformance, but they're not necessarily outright conflicting as well.
Thank you.
All right, I will now open the public hearing regarding the annexation code amendments. Please remember to keep yourself on mute until you're called to provide public testimony. If you'd like to speak, please use a raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine. If you're here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to Planning Commission Assistant Sarah. When called upon to speak, please state your name, mail-in address, and keep your comments to three minutes. Sarah, do we have any hands raised online?
We do not have any hands raised online, but we do have Mr. Satri, who is the applicant representative, would like to speak.
Excellent, thank you very much.
I'm Rick Satri with the Satri Group, speaking on behalf of the applicant, the CETA. I had a page of comments here tonight. You've been sitting there a long time, and Mr. Severs did an outstanding job with the staff report this evening. I would just like to say that, as Mr. Severs said, this is round two of a multi-round effort in terms of developing a master plan for the Glenwood Riverfront. Round one was the annexation process concluded earlier this year. This is round two with these three amendments before you. Once these three amendments conclude their process through with the City Council, then the consultant team and the applicant will be ready to actually begin submitting master plan applications itself, which is our ultimate goal. So, again, that's all I'm going to say, less than I had planned on saying because you've been sitting here a long time tonight. And along with staff, I'm available if you have any more questions. Thank you.
Appreciate that explanation. All right, I believe at this point, we've reached that spot in our agenda, if I'm not mistaken, where we can entertain motion. That would be.
Yeah, I move that we, the Planning Commission, recommend the City Council to adopt this proposed code amendment as presented tonight. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Okay, there's hearing none. Sandy, can we vote with a roll call?
Sure. Chair Buck?
Aye.
Commissioner Greenwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Driggs?
Aye.
And Commissioner Eckland?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
You knew I was waiting for it. Thank you very much. All right. I believe that concludes our regular session. All right, okay, we will now hear business from the Planning Commission. Are there any reports on council actions? I have not had a chance to put together my report from a recent council meeting. I will have that for you at our next meeting. Excellent, we get theme music. Thanks, Sarah. So, the report that I owe the commission, I have not yet completed. I've watched part of that meeting. Any others? All righty. Any business from the Planning Commission? Yeah, they're next. Oh, did I already say Planning Commission? Okay, I'm tired. Thank you, Commissioner Driggs. Any business from the Development and Public Works Department?
The only thing I have to offer for you tonight is that we will be meeting with you again on October seventh, and it will be a public hearing on a zoning map amendment along Main Street. So, we'll see you again at seven o'clock on October seventh.
Okay, with that, I will adjourn the meeting.